Welcome, everyone, to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for January 14?
So moved.
All righty, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The minutes pass. Do we have any cards from the public? Oh, I'm sorry. And then I'd like to go back. We also have the minutes of January 21.
Move approval.
There's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Those minutes are approved also. There's no cards for calls to the public, so...
Wait, wait, we just got one.
Uh-oh. Just slipped it right in. Who is it? Joanne, come on up, Mrs. Woods. Yep, you're on. Service with a smile. And Joanne, if you would like to go up to that microphone and just say your name and...
Do I get everybody's minutes? Only mine, too. Okay. I've been looking around for ideas of how some other cities have addressed excessive use of force. And so, these are some ideas. One is mine. This is from Dallas. That's where I'm originally from. I want some items for transparency added to the current police website. And presently, in the in memoriam subtitle, they have the currently fallen officers, the 37 from 1925 to 2014. This is just close to my heart. I wish there was fallen unarmed citizens because I don't see... I'd like that as in a form of an apology and acknowledgement of loss that community members have suffered. Currently, there is commendations and complaint sections on how to file. And I would like for those filed, if the results are valid after the investigations, for those to be listed. And much of the information that I'm going to give you on Dallas was after an activist group had filed a federal complaint against the Dallas Police alleging a pattern of excessive force against minorities. These are the things they included. One, ethnicity of the officers and suspects. Two, the grand jury disposition. And three, whether the suspect was armed or not. The site also included the number of assaults on officers. Does that mean them up? Okay. Okay. Let me see. That's the shootings. The only thing I want to say is my concern, I think a few of us here are concerned about the militarization of the police across the nation. And I'd like things to be transparent about the military, you know, surplus that has been given to our city and how much it costs to maintain those items.
Joanne, we'd like to thank you for coming out and giving those testimonies and putting it on the record. And also for all those individuals that came out to Cortez High School where we took out the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting. And we had the chief and some of the staff members there addressing the community concerns. And I just want to thank you all and thank my colleagues for doing that. And especially Councilmember Williams for hosting us in her district and the Cortez High School also. With that, there's no other call to the public. We'll continue to... Item number four, that's information only. There's no presentation planned, but if my colleagues have any questions, staff's here. If not, we'll move on. Any questions? All righty, we'll go to items five through eight. There are consent items.
I move approval.
I have a question on item six. So could we move approval on five, seven, and eight?
So there's a motion to approve items five, seven, and eight. And there's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, those items pass. We're on item number six. And that's...
Governor's Office of Highway Safety Grants. Thank you. So when we did this item last year, we talked about in District Eight, we have many individuals from the refugee community who...
Yeah, sit at the table.
Yeah. Make yourself comfortable.
I just invited myself.
Thank you. I think this will be very quick. So we have many individuals from the refugee safety who may be refugee community who didn't have some of the traffic background and also face challenges like being unable to pay for car seats. And when we did this item last year, staff had mentioned that there would be opportunities to reach out and address that through some of the existing grants. And so same question this year, if there's any opportunity to work with the refugee community through the...
Absolutely. We've located all the refugee communities and we'll be able to canvass those... Most of them are in apartment complexes. We'll be able to canvas those apartments and give them flyers and whatnot. Because we'll set up car seat installation locations in different council districts. And again, we'll look at target populations and then who needs the most of them. So we will have locations out around the valley throughout this next year.
Wonderful. Maricopa Integrated Health Systems had approached us about people being unable to afford the car seats. So that was one challenge. We're looking for opportunities to address.
And we'll also be working with other organizations. I mean, aside from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, we'll save kids in Maricopa County as well who will be correlating with that in order to make sure that we do address those needs for the refugees.
Fabulous. And I'm sure it goes to many other communities as well, but that was one that was brought to the attention of our office. So thank you for help. That is all my questions.
Any other questions? I just really want to thank the Fire Department, also the Police Department, for all their safety programs and prevention programs that are out there from car seats to water safety to even our bike rodeos that we have out there where we train young people how to stop at stop signs, look both ways. And I just want to really thank you for all those great programs that are out there for our community.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
All righty, with that, is there a motion to...
Move approval. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item passes. All right, we're on item number nine. We're getting an update on the calls for service and response times for our Fire Department. Welcome, Chief.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our calls for service and our response times. Like every Fire Department, we're somewhat challenged with response times because our ability to respond is based on availability and capability. And if your first duty company's on another call, you're going to bring in second duty companies. But you'll see with the trending over the years is that we've done very well by moving companies around, be able to address calls for service. So with me is my Acting Assistant Chief, Ron Jameson. He's currently the Operations Chief, which is in charge of all the boots on the ground. So any in the response mechanism, Ron's in charge of. So he'll take the lead on this discussion.
Good morning. We had a PowerPoint.
Right there.
Watch out with all this high tech around here.
Hidden in plain sight, sorry. Basically, we just talked about our overview and basically nothing that you don't know already, but we respond to all kinds of calls. Basically, there isn't a type of call for service that we don't respond to. You call 911, we're coming. And we're going to take care of business and basically make that problem go away. We have 1,556 sworn members serving 1.5 million people, 519 square miles, which Fire Department-wise is a huge area. And we have 58 fire stations to make that coverage and keep our response times to a reasonable level. Total calls for 2014, 177,000, 396. Most of those were EMS dispatches at 156,000. We had about 14,000 fire calls, which is... That percentage-wise is holding pretty steady. About 680 special operations calls, and that includes everything from confined space rescue, transfer rescue, mountain rescue, flooding conditions, anything exceptional that way. Some calls that just don't fit into other categories. And 60,000 ambulance transports. Our call volume is trending up. We're just shy of 180,000 calls this year for the City of Phoenix. The dispatch center actually dispatches for 29 different agencies, and the call volume out of that facility is much, much higher. But just in the geographic boundaries of the City of Phoenix, we've been trending up year after year.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Included in your calls, are those... Would you go to one of our sister cities? Because I know you go back and forth.
Yes. Councilwoman Williams, it is. We count our calls that we actually get dispatched on, and the City of Phoenix runs. So we run into the surrounding cities quite often, specifically Tempe and Peoria, Glendale. And so on the west side, we have a lot of cities we run a lot of calls in.
Thank you.
So business is good.
Way too good.
Yeah. This is a typical call breakdown. Obviously, advanced life support is our highest volume calls. And of that, difficulty breathing is the top. Just an ill person, which covers a large cross-section of calls. Fall injuries, basically trauma from accidents. And then chest pains, which is actually trending down a little bit. And altered level of consciousness is running pretty standard. It's staying pretty flatline for us. So that's just our top five. Just days, basically, you see when we have a storm and we go into emergency deployment situation where the calls ramp up, we have power lines down, we have tremendous numbers of calls going out. So we have some unique things that we do with our staffing model to put more trucks in service without creating a different constant staffing impact. So these storm days are really busy, and it taxes our system. We've just implemented some automation in our call dispatch system that keeps these calls rolling out faster than ever. It's a computer-aided vocal dispatch that takes the calls out of the queue. Normally, on these types of days, we could get dozens of calls waiting to get dispatched, and now they get dispatched instantly. So it saves us some response time, and it's a very good upgrade for us.
So September 8th didn't make the busiest storm list?
What's that?
Was it September 8th? It was the big storm.
Yes. Call volume-wise, we've had the haboob-type storms, Councilwoman Gago, generate more calls. Right? So on that particular call, the intense call volume was isolated into a small geographic area. So when we have a big dust storm or a thunderstorm comes in, not just rain, but then it triggers calls all over the entire 519 square miles. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions that we have?
Dust storm-related calls would often be car accidents and... Could you give us a little bit more of an eye into what kind of calls?
When we have a... And we used to refer to it as emergency storm deployment, but now it's just emergency deployment. When we have that situation come up, typically associated with high winds. So we have lots of accidents. We have people not being able to see, so they're running into stuff. We have a tremendous call volume associated with lines, power lines down, and loss of service that way. We have intersections getting knocked out, which these same things affect PD in almost the same manner, call volume-wise. So basically, a loss of service to the city as a whole. So it generates lots of call volume.
Wonderful. I think we're participating in the National Resilience Task Force through the White House to talk about more extreme weather events. Any lessons learned or things you'd like us to carry forward to that task? I mean, some of those sound like they're not preventable and...
Yes, a lot of them aren't. And of course, you know, we respond to every call. So everybody's perception of what a 911 call is is different. So we get a lot of phone calls just because they lost power or something like that, they're going to generate call volume. It doesn't matter, we still respond and do what we do. So as far as lessons learned, I think we did some unique things after the flooding situation in the South Valley that we've never done before. The Resource Center that we set up through emergency management was unprecedented. You know, the declaration of an emergency was unprecedented for us and those kind of things. Activation of the EOC. So we learned a lot from those call volumes. And even participation in the Super Bowl has allowed us to basically learn how to manage much larger events than we've ever handled before in a more seamless fashion. So it's... Our skills are getting better.
Well, Super Bowl was a good opportunity. The others, I'm sorry, we had the opportunity to test.
Yes, it was. For us to manage that system with basically hundreds of different agencies, and it went off fairly seamless for us, we were very happy with the outcome. And it was impressive to be up there and see what we did and managed with our public safety partners. And virtually every other department, partners from every department in the city, were participating in that operation, and it went really well. I think the NFL was extremely pleased.
Had the opportunity to tour the MAC, and it really was an impressive operation. Going back to the power line outages, do we have a way to share that data electronically with the utilities? Or do we just have to pick up the phone and call or...
Actually, a lot of times, they know before we do because their systems are all computer monitored. So when they get an outage, it triggers a call for service on their side. And typically, they won't call us, per se, for a power outage. We're getting calls from the public.
What do we do with the public call, I guess is what I should have asked.
So we basically will respond, right? So the outage is really not a response for us, but the power line's down. So whenever the wind comes up and the lines start knocking into each other, some of them are going to fall and create issues. Or we'll have transformer fires that will initiate a blackout and a lot of calls for service because they'll hear the transformer popping and things like that. So we'll get a lot of calls for service that way. And we work really good. We have an excellent working relationship with our utility partners in not just power, but natural gas. So we have an excellent relationship.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's the average response time?
Right now, it's four minutes and 48 seconds.
Is that comparable to the national average or...?
Yeah, our goal is to be under five minutes. So we've been hovering close to that. We've instituted some programs to increase... To decrease our response time, increase our speed at which we respond. But call volume has gone up, and so our numbers have trended up. But we're about eight seconds higher than we were a couple of years ago. But we're still well underneath the five-minute mark for our average response time.
Thank you.
So saying that, Chief, our average is... So it's according to the minutes and stuff, it's 90% of the time under five minutes is the standard, right?
That's the goal, yes.
And then right now, we're not at that goal yet. We're about 61% or so.
We are. So we have some areas of the city where response times are long because of the distribution of Fire Department assets. So in the north part of the valley, our stations aren't as close together they are in the central city, and that increases response time. So we have more call volume in the central city. So our... We have more call volume, so the response times are fairly short because we have a high density for fire stations in those areas. But those outline areas, the outside edges of the city, those resources are farther spread, and that increases the response time overall.
Any other questions? Any comments? I just really want to thank you all for your hard work. And I've been to the Training Center many times, and what a great facility. And I know that people come around the country just to look at the operations that we have. They all wish they can have the same type of Training Center and opportunities that we have here in the City of Phoenix. So thank you, Chief, for your hard work and all your encouragement, and the Assistant Chief for everything you do out there in the Training Center also. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're on item number 10. That's looking at crime status update. And we have our chief coming up. Chief Yonner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, today we're going to talk about some crime rates as well as our calls for service and some response times. With me today is Ms. Karen Contact, who supervises our Crime Analysis and Research Unit. And Karen's going to do the presentation, and then we'll answer any questions.
Good morning. We finally, in January, were able to finish reviewing the rest of the 2014 crime reports. And so now we're here able to give you our crime trends and our calls for service response times. We report our crimes according to the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting Standards. And based on that, they break it down into two types of Part I crimes, violent crimes and property crimes. And so we'll go through each one separately as well as total crimes. Violent crimes for UCR includes homicide, rape, robbery, and ag assault. And you can see from the slide, we are down 7.9% from last year in terms of overall violent crime. What that equates to is about 750 less violent crime victims for the year. And that's about 60 less each month. And if you're talking homicides, rapes, robberies, and ag assault, that's a positive thing, that we have less victims of that. The other thing that's noteworthy in terms of our overall violent crime is we were having a three-year trend of increases. And this is our first year since that with a decrease in violent crime. In terms of property crime, property crime, what is included in the UCR Part I crimes are burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. So that's what we're talking about here. We're down 5.2% in property crime. And that may not sound like a lot, but the majority of the crimes that we have in the city are property crimes. So you're talking thefts, you're not talking the homicides, the rapes. So that ends up being it's 3,100 less victims for the whole year in terms of property crime. That's over about 260 each month of less victims. So that's a very positive thing for our citizens. The other thing is this year is the lowest property crime in over 30 years. So it's a very positive year for us. So we saw decreases in both violent and property. What you'll see, this is total crime. So all it is is violent and property together. Again, property makes up the majority of our crime types, so this pattern will mirror what you see for property crime. So again, overall Part I UCR crime for us as a city is down 5.6% from last year. And you can see the trend again is downward trend, very low for us for property crime. In terms... And so, I mean, in terms of call for service, what I want to do is we break down our response times into different priorities. Is this an emergency call? Is this not an emergency call? So I wanted to go back and just kind of refresh your knowledge of Priority One, Two, and Three. So Priority One are basically crimes in progress or very serious nature or immediate personal danger or harm. So you can see some examples: shooting, stabbings, ongoing fights, ag assaults, that type of thing. Priority Two calls, they're a little bit less urgent in nature, so there can be a potential for violence there, but it hasn't happened. So there may be an argument, there's no physical altercation yet. Priority Two can be there wasn't a sexual assault, but the victim is at the hospital, so it's not ongoing at this time. Priority Three calls are less urgent, non-urgent in nature. It's usually you get back from your vacation, you're going to report, you know, my vehicle or whatever was stolen at the time. And vehicle thefts are different, they would report those pretty quickly. But I mean, I came home and my bike was gone from my front lawn, so it's not as urgent, the person's not on site, that type of thing. We also offer our citizens the ability to do online reporting. And so if they don't want to wait for an officer and they don't need, you know, fingerprints taken and that type of thing, they can do the online reporting, and that way they can go ahead and file the report themselves. So what we wanted to do was show you our overall Priority One, Two, and Three response time from 2011 forward. And why we started with 2011 is we had a new CAD system partway through 2010. So this is consistent CAD system across the multiple years. What you can see from 2011 to 2014 is we've had an increase of 21 seconds in our emergency, our Priority One calls. Priority Twos and Threes, you'll see a little bit bigger increases. So Priority Two is about a two-minute increase, and Priority Three is a 10-minute increase in our median response time to those types of calls. And considering at the same time, we've lost right around 200 officers, I mean, to maintain that for the emergency-level calls is a pretty good accomplishment. The other thing that I wanted to show is our officers are decreasing. Like I mentioned, our volume of calls has remained pretty consistent across the years. So you can see Priority Ones, you know, in terms of the years, you're looking at 110 in 2012, 109 in 2013, and again, 110,000 in 2014. Very consistent in terms of our number of calls that we're responding to for the last multiple years.
I have a question on... It says showing Priority Three, and there is a decrease. Is that due to the fact that you now can report it online and an officer doesn't have to respond?
They would still be counted? You mean in terms of the volume?
Right, on that lower chart.
I would have to go back and see if it was, you know, for the ones that were reported online, because this is just dispatch-only. So these are the ones that went out. Do I see an increase of ones that were handled by CopLogic? I can go back and check that for you.
When you count the crimes, do you include those that, I guess, weren't called in but were logged in?
If the citizen entered it themselves online, yes, those count as crime counts.
Okay.
And not as call counts, right?
But you include those in the overall statistics?
For crimes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Councilmember.
Do you have any data on property crimes by police precinct?
We can go back and pull that up. I didn't bring it for this presentation, yeah.
We just... I feel like in our office, the Australia Maryville precinct has... We've gotten a lot of concerns about increased in property crimes. And people perceive it to be at hot, in some cases, record-high levels. And so it would be good to see the data and...
Yeah, and sometimes what we'll see is we'll get a couple on the same street, and then that makes the perception seem like it is happening a lot. But we can pull it, and we do that for a lot of the community meetings. We address that particular neighborhood if they have any concerns and look at crimes just in their area, too.
That would be fabulous. Because as we've talked about, even if we're at record lows, if you're one of the ones who were a victim, it doesn't feel like progress.
It does not feel good. And if you have a particular neighborhood that you want us to look at that you're coming from, we can do that, so...
Wonderful.
Councilmember.
On the Priority Three, when they enter it online, what type of crime is it that they're entering online that a police officer doesn't go to the house? What type of crime is it?
So the Priority Three counts here are ones that we dispatch on, so those aren't including those. But Priority Three, in terms of the... There's only certain ones eligible for online reporting. So if you have a suspect description, you're not supposed to report it if it's ongoing or something. They get all these warnings when they go online. But really, it's, you know, criminal damage. You can see, I've lost my property, I've... I turned in, I was burglarized, I told the officer a bunch, but then have an additional, oh, you know what, I just realized this was stolen, too. It's those type of things where you don't need to take evidence, you don't need a fingerprint, you don't need to do any of that type of stuff.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, this is... They can always have a police officer respond. This is for convenience of our community, so that they can come in and do it online themselves. And as you saw from some of our response times, there is a period of time before it would take us to get there. So this is a convenience, a customer service enhancement that we added several years ago. And there's checks and balances in place to ensure that they are legitimate crimes that occurred.
I was just curious, only because if there's a burglary or a break-in into a car, that's a burglary would be that, or vandalism, is that considered a crime that you would then just enter on the... Go to the internet and just say, okay, my car was broken into, these things are vandalized, and nothing was taken, but it was, I want to report it?
Correct. And that's what they do. But it still counts, and our detectives still get them, and we still identify the trends of where they're occurring in the neighborhoods. So all those go into our statistics, even though they're entered by the citizen online. And that's why Councilwoman Williams, there's a little bit of a difference. Last I checked, we took about 11,000 calls online over the course of a year, which is pretty good. So we're using that, our citizens are using that. And it's, again, it's a convenience and a customer service thing to them, but it is counted. It's counted in our charts of property crimes, and it's also something that we act upon when we get trends.
Based on that, when you make that call, do you get a report number so that you could turn to insurance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, we just went through restructuring of our precincts. Do we have any data if that's been effective? If it's working out? If the response times are quicker? Or do we have any data going back to how it was before versus how it is now?
Well, and Karen can comment on this a little bit, but we did that in October of last year. So since October, when we... And the reason we did that was to put our police officers, deploy them more efficiently in the right areas of the city. deploy them more efficiently in the right areas of the city based on workload and response times. So that's why we did it. Have we seen the impact of that yet? No, we haven't, because we need a little more time to go by. You know, after October, you got the holidays, and then we ran into the Super Bowl, which, you know, which kind of threw us a little bit out of whack, but it turned out great. So we will get more data over time so that we can evaluate that and then make further tweaks to our deployment so that we are trying to meet our response times. And some of the things that, and Karen said it, I mean, to have, to be 4,000 fewer victims this year overall compared to 2013, that's, that's good for the city of Phoenix. That's good work by the men and women of the Phoenix Police Department. So we're very proud of that. Our crime is down, our property crime is down. And as you say, Councilwoman Gago, it always counts. So we can always make sure we can address those in the neighborhoods. But we're doing pretty well as our crime goes down. And that, in spite of the fact that we're down numerous officers.
Thank you, Chief. We have a card from Walt Gray. Maybe we can listen to Walt and if there's any other comments, we can do that right after Walt.
Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski and Subcommittee. Just want to make some general comments about crime statistics. One, there's no mention of immigration stops and, you know, what, how often ICE is called and what happens to the people who are stopped. And I think that's important to the community. Not so much now, we have some relaxation, but, you know, it's been a big issue in the past. Secondly, I think it would be good for the council to provide for all the PIO officers or police officers. These are not writers, and I think, or communicators. I think it'd be good to have a civilian communicator in the Public Information Office to, to get this kind of information out throughout the year in different times. Because, you know, when the federal report comes out and when the Subcommittee hears this report, this is very timely, this is a news story. And, and I just think a public information officer, a writer, a communicator would help. PSAs, I've mentioned these in the past. I think PSAs would, you could stop the, you know, save money by not doing those customer service surveys, which I don't believe help. And use those monies for PSAs, public service announcements, that remind people, both fire and police, of the different issues that come up throughout the year, whether it's the hubboobs or some spiking crime. And third, if you notice, our crime actually decreased during the recession. And so that's, that's a criminology issue. And I think it'd be good for police to work with ASU on why, on some of these trends. Give a little bit more background and more, more depth to the statistics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walt. Any other questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Pestore.
I forgot my question. But I think, I think what's also the trend in happening is there's a number of different elements or programs, or we're just being more proactive in, in this area in the sense of citizens. And I think that, I feel like the next door is really, has everybody engaged? Because I get information that I wouldn't, wouldn't have gotten in the past because of Nextdoor. And I am very much aware of what's happening in my neighborhood, what cars we should be suspicious about, or what has happened over at this house that could be. So I think there's a number of, I don't even know the term, techniques or items that we are all using and we're all engaged to keep our crime rate low. And so I'd like to thank, thank you for providing those services.
Well, and I couldn't agree with you more. You know, when we had the Subcommittee meeting out at Cortez High School, one of the things that came up was monitoring Nextdoor. And since then, each month, our precinct commanders will be posting on Nextdoor crime trends in their areas or maybe a positive message, whatever it is, but trying to push that information out. Because crime is down, and as Mr. Gray says, it's, there's a lot of factors involved in crime. But one of the huge factors that we always emphasize is the participation and the awareness of our community. And having them engaged and aware through Nextdoor, or whatever communication that is, is gold as far as keeping our crime down and keeping our city safe.
Any other questions? Now, Chief, when can we actually get some of that data about the new precincts and kind of comparing stats from last year to this year?
You know, and I'll bend to Karen on this, but I think six months is probably a good start. I don't think that'll tell us everything, but I think, what do you think, Karen?
Yeah, six months is probably good, because like you said, we changed it in October. And so you've got November, December holiday, Super Bowl, January. So you've already got three. Now we're in February, so you're going to start getting normal months within there. And that will be a good time to look at.
And then Karen, the other thing is, Mr. Gray brings up a good point about the whole immigrant community. That whole SB 1070 hit us probably in 2010. And we've seen a decrease of calls to our office in Spanish. And the fear factor of individuals calling 911 or the police. I was wondering if there's any type of data that we can actually look at to see if maybe we have groups or immigrants that are afraid, or Spanish speakers, that are afraid to call the police because of this, these new state laws or even federal laws? Maybe go back, right?
Yeah, it's hard to figure out if they're afraid to call, because then you don't hear from them. So it's, how many go unreported has been a classic question.
Are any trends of maybe, like for ourselves, Spanish speakers versus non-Spanish speakers in the past? So if you look back at 2007 through '10, I'm not sure, but are even areas like Councilmember Gago was talking about, if we can look at maybe normal immigrant or Hispanic community areas, if the calls have dropped drastically, maybe there might be a trend there that we should look at, right? And in the future, if the trend starts to go up because the driver's license and because of the defer actions and all that, then the increase of calls might be because of that. So we can understand the data also.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we'll look at that. That's, that'll be a challenge, but we'll, we'll think of something and come up with it. One thing that I do know is I just read an audit report that our Professional Standards Bureau put out last month about how we're complying with our policy relating to immigration arrests and those things. And you're aware of our policy. But over the course of the last year, we only had 77 reports, 77 DRs written regarding an immigration violation. So in the big scheme of things, that's not very many. So it's not having our policies and the issue isn't having an impact on our police department as far as operationally.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Well, Chief, Karen, thank you so much for the report. It's good information. I guess, Chief, you're still up here, huh? You got the Public Safety Budget Update? So we got the Joe Yanner Show.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, Jill Solai is here to talk about the police department's budget. And tomorrow is Jill's birthday, just for the record.
Is the cake coming in now or later?
All right, good morning. Today, I'm going to go over the budget for, through the end of December. Currently, our budget is $555 million. And then our monthly expenditures through the, through, for December, as you can see, there's, there is no variance whatsoever. We spent about $47.8 million for both fiscal years. And then the bottom line for our first six months, there's a 1% decrease in our expenditures. Our top 10 expenditures are salaries again at 25%, sworn career enhancement at 1.5%, our overtime, 1.2%, sick leave payout at .87%, equipment management, .63%, jail services, .67%, auto property insurance at .44%, hardware software at .40%, our regional wireless, .34%, and our holiday pay at .31%. And then from last, last time we talked, you wanted to take a look at what we spent the previous fiscal year. So we've included that information up there also. Some anomalies that have happened over the last few months are, we've had some increase in our overtime. One of them is due to the DPS officer shooting on the I-17 corridor. We spent 274 million, I mean, 274,000 in OT for that. And for a lot of the various protests, we've spent 333,000. And then the county had an invoice error that we had to pay this year, was over $300,000. Our revenues collected, we have last year compared to this year, court awards, our SRO and our special events, IGAs and our task force, false alarms, vehicle impound, grants, and our pawn shop. And that is it for police.
Any questions or comments? I have a comment. I just want to thank you all, because I think it's so important that individuals actually get to see what we were spending last year compared to this year and that you all are being good stewards of those tax dollars that individuals are paying us and making sure that our community is safe and you guys are operating great. So I think it's really important that we have these monthly budget updates. So when we go to those budget hearings, people know that we're trying to be the best stewards possible. So thank you, Chief, and thank you for all your hard work in keeping it balanced. And even though we have some hiccups, we still keep it balanced. So thank you so much.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. I'm never quite sure whether I enjoy following police or not. It always makes me feel small when you see the budget numbers up there. Year-to-date, through the first half of the fiscal year, the municipal court spent $13.8 million. That's out of a full yearly budget of a little over 28. So you can see that we're about at the same place. Under budget for the year and realize, as we've talked about before, that's also a little different than simply also being under last year's expenditures, because the budget itself had already trended down somewhat for us. But you can see that year-to-date, over those first six months, we are 6.6% under in our spending for the year. So under what we'd spent last year, which itself was less than we'd spent the year before. And if we go to the next slide, thank you, Ken, you can see that, again, as we've talked about, we're in, in pretty much the same position. If you look at all of the top of those, the top eight of those, they are all, again, overwhelmingly personnel costs. And ultimately, you can see that, that remains the vast majority of the municipal court's expenditures are the various components of the, of the personnel cost between the salaries, the pension contributions, and deferred compensation, et cetera. Now, that's the good news. Here is the, what I would say is the not-so-good news that we've talked about the last couple of times that we've been here. And that is that in addition to our expenditures going down, we have seen declining revenues. And again, you can see that we're about 8% under what we had collected year-to-date last year across the board for those. And as I have continued to watch it, the trend that I spoke to you about last time or a couple of months ago has continued. We are about, year-to-date, about 20% under last year in terms of the, the number of filings that come into the court. And there's a direct correlation there, because that, that 20% drop is significant in that we're talking about civil traffic violations, which themselves are a large portion of what drives the fines and the revenues. So that's where we are. We have kept in pretty close contact with the budget and research so that they're aware of where that trend is and we can talk about where it's going.
Any comments?
We are in the middle of transitions related to some of the ways we house homeless individuals in the community. And there are some advocates who've approached our office that they're concerned there's going to be a lot more cases involving homeless individuals from minor offenses. Is that something that's on your radar screen? Is that something you'd see affecting your budget?
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Gago, to answer the last question first, I don't see it affecting our budget. And one of the reasons for that being that we were one of the first cities in the county about nine years ago to start a homeless court. And we began that with the cities of Tempe and the cities of Glendale. And that was a program that was run out of caste that actually allowed people who had prior adjudicated issues but that hadn't been able to pay to get back into the system and be able to take care of some of those things so that they could actually, through community service and other avenues, pay off old debts or have them forgiven. They were able to get driver's licenses back, that sort of thing that can be a real boost and a help to being able to, to change the situation that they're in. Been very successful, that was successful enough that the county Superior Court actually adopted that on the regional level. And so as of three years ago, the homeless court is fully regional. All the limited jurisdiction courts in Maricopa County are there. One of our judges has long been a big proponent of it and one of the judges that is out there quite a bit. So we have quite a few cases that go through there. And we've been able to do that the entire time without any increase in our own budget. And even as it continues to grow out there now, now that the county has adopted it, it is the County Board of Supervisors that has stepped in and funded some of that. So we continue to see increases in the number of people that need those services and use it. But we're able at this point to provide those services without needing extra dollars to do so.
Thank you. And thank you for the support of the Stand Down event coming up this weekend.
Very excited about that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Williams?
You just mentioned that revenue is down because of traffic violations? Is that what you're saying?
The biggest component of our revenues, if you look at the fines of the court, come from the civil traffic tickets that are written. And year-to-date, there's been 20% fewer civil traffic tickets written than there were last year.
Okay, Chief, I guess that goes to, does that mean there's less accidents? I mean, how do we find statistics on this?
First of all, we're, in the last two years, since '11, we're 180 first responders down. That's officers in patrol. That's not total officers. We're 264 officers total down in that same time period. So that's 180 less police officers in patrol cars taking traffic enforcement. So I don't know the exact numbers. I would imagine that our citations are down about that same amount. So, you know, that's one of the things, was your police force reduces, there's less proactive activity in enforcement when it comes to traffic violations. So the accidents, and I'd have to ask Lieutenant Sarwane if they're actually down. I think we're holding about even on, on collisions. But I do know that our citations are down. And that's a direct impact of a smaller workforce.
I didn't think about, from that aspect. And I'm not saying I want quotas. Don't misinterpret that. But didn't think about having fewer offices writing fewer tickets. I was correlating it with accidents, so thank you.
And Councilwoman Williams, if I may, just to add one other thought to that. Phoenix is not alone in that regard. You know, limited jurisdiction courts across the state, which are the ones that handle the civil traffic tickets, report to the administrative office of the courts. And reductions is something that we have seen, not only in Phoenix, but statewide for about the last five years.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a card from Walt Gray on this issue.
Thank you again, Mr. Councilman Nowakowski and Subcommittee. Just, you know, budget issues, I don't have any particular comments about what's been presented. But I know we've talked about increasing the police department. There's a possible tax initiative for more police officers. I, my reminder to you is that there was a time when we were at, you know, additional 500 police officers. And we had a study that showed we were overstaffed. So I wouldn't pursue that so aggressively, although I know there is a need for more police officers. And also, something I saw in the news in New York and Philadelphia, they use security cameras. Police department uses security cameras, more so in the city, throughout the city, along with agreements with businesses that have security cameras. And this, they have found, has, you know, helped with finding crime and finding the criminals, the suspects. Also, I ask you not to forget the SROs in the schools. You know, this was a major issue a few years ago. And we, you know, it's just like everything else. And I know you have monetary ch... And I know you have monetary challenges. But, and also, I think one way to save costs on SROs is to go to non-police officers, other kind of personnel who are certified to use a firearm. And use those in school, and then use those people who are SROs in sense to do other things in the schools in addition to providing safety and police-related information. But like teen responsibility, or drug and alcohol prevention, those kinds of things. You can, I think would be a better use of the person, still make them flexible enough to respond to any emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Any other comments on our courts? I just want to thank you, because seeing that our revenue is down, our collections are down, but you found other ways to make up through our expenditures. So that's the way that we should be operating at a zero budget, where if you're not bringing in the revenue, then you find other ways to cut those. I guess my time's up, to cut those funds. So thank you. We'll go on with fire.
Chairman Nowakowski and members of the committee, I'll present the fire department's budget. As you can see up here, we're six months into the year, and we're about 48.4% spent of the $300 million, which is pretty much exactly where we needed to be. We spend the balance of the year, and we settle out at the end of the year, the other portion, the 52%. So as we look at our six-month expenditures, again, across the board, there's a slight variance, both positives and negatives. The 5.9% negative was directly related to, and I guess that falls in the month of November, when we started looking at our, some of our trending being over. We slowed down some of our spending in our capital infrastructure, our repairs to our facilities, those kind of things, just to balance the budget out. It's one of these annual things that we do to keep things moving smoothly, so we hit our target. The last note is that you see in the total is 1.5%, but something interesting to note is that our budget was actually adjusted for this year over the previous year by about that exact same amount. So I feel like we're right on target. Top 10 expenditures, they almost look like they were copied from my colleagues, but they're largely personnel-driven. So salaries, as you can see, make up the bulk of it, and other contributions to personnel. Much of this, again, is, it trends pretty much the same as we saw last year, with pension contributions being up, and some of those other things for group health insurance being up as well. So as we look at revenues collected, the large portion of our revenues come from our ambulance transports, and we are slightly down at this point of the year. One of the reasons that we see is because access, which is our primary provider for this, we took a reduction in the allowable amount that we could charge last year. We're anticipating this will continue to climb and will catch up. However, you're all very well aware of what's going on at the state level as far as the access. So that's something that we'll continue to watch. In our other areas, we're trending pretty much the same as what we anticipated for revenues. And I think that's about it. Take any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Gueye?
Could you speak a little bit about the Spanish immersion stations and how those are being used as we look at our budget?
Chairman Nowakowski, Councilwoman Gueye, I am not exactly 100% involved in that area, but our Spanish immersion stations, there's two of them. And what happens with those is that we take members that want to learn Spanish and be fluent at them. They, by voluntary process, they're assigned to these stations. While they're there, we call them immersion stations, because 100% of the language they should be speaking is Spanish while they're there. They spend a certain portion of their day learning the didactics or the actual language there. They respond to calls. Much of the things in the stations are actually labeled in Spanish. So if you ever visit one of those stations, you'll see there's labels all over that are in Spanish. The end result is that after a period of time, they take a test for proficiency. And if they pass the proficiency exam, then they're a certified Spanish speaker.
And they're not being used differently or looked at as a budget management tool?
Not to my knowledge. The two stations we have, we've had them for probably 15 years now. After these folks are fluent, they rotate back out to the field, and somebody else fills their spot. It's a continuous process, and we continue to teach her, as many people as we can, how to speak multi-languages.
If you do find out that there being any changes made due to budget, would you let us know?
We'll certainly do that.
Any other comments or questions?
Just in comparing the two reports, for police pension, is that reported as a under-salary?
No, I don't report the pension part of it, because it is, we have high pension costs, and we have high healthcare costs. But I try to, what I'm trying to report is some things that are significant and have a big impact on our budget that we have some control over. So that's kind of the things I wanted to report versus putting the pension out there, or healthcare costs and things like that. But if that's something you would want me to add, I can do that. But I was just trying to show some other expenditures that we control a little bit that are high for our department.
Would you like to have that report added on, or?
I just, it said top 10 expenditures, so I guess I assumed.
Well, I was just trying to do top 10 that. Controllable, because, I mean, salaries aren't that controllable, but it's always going to be the biggest for us. But I could do something like our total personnel cost, and then some other things underneath, if you want to see that. But I could add those type of items if you want.
So. I think for all of us, it probably should be set as standard. A standard, standard in the sense of everybody reporting the same. What that is and what we want on it, and maybe that's a little different. But I'm looking at this model or this template in order to then move it to the PAC committee. And so I need, for me, I think it should just be standard. If whatever's being reported in this committee, the other committee should also have the same standard. And so I don't know, maybe that's something that you, Chair, can figure out and decide what we want as a standard.
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Pastore, and subcommittee members, perhaps we can have the Budget and Research Department help create a common template that suits the interests and needs of the, of subcommittees on a draft basis. And then you all can make amendments, as you wish, for the specific interests of your subcommittees. But we can certainly have Mario work with the departments to get to a common place that you all are comfortable with.
A great suggestion. Will it be done by this afternoon when I meet with my committee? I'm just joking. I'm just teasing you.
You've got two hours.
Details.
Councilmember Williams, any comments?
I would just like to have the pension costs included, because that has become the subject of anything to do with our budget. And I think it needs to be publicized, how much they are.
Could you explain, then, if these are discretionary, sick leave payout, holiday pay? How are they more discretionary? Or controllable?
Well, they're, they're very specific to our department, and that's kind of one of the reasons why I wanted to explain it, like the sworn career enhancement. That's a program that is part of their contract agreements that help, you know, for them to continue their education. And by doing that, we'll pay them more in their salary to do that. Sick leave payout is another union-negotiated item that just happened this fiscal year that we're paying additional monies out for than we have in the previous years. The other items, overtime, that's always a hot one for us, because we work additional overtime. And then the other ones are just basically operating costs that our department has.
And overtime's certainly a good news story of this Super Bowl compared to the last one.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? I just really want to thank you all. We're asking you to do more with less, and you can see that you're living within your means and within our budgets. And I think the, bringing the pension issue would absolutely show us the true picture. And we understand that you can't control that. That's something that's, that's set by the state and also for our civil unions here at the city level. So we understand that portion of it. But I think it's really important to paint that true picture and let people know that you're living within your means. So thank you so much. So with that, we have future items, agenda items. Are there any suggestions? There's been a sheet passed around.
I would like to see the, a report on the gang task force and gang activity. I don't know if we could do that in March.
All right, we'll bring that up in March. Anything else? You know, I've been hearing that there's been more crimes out at the parks. I'd like to have some type of, maybe a report or some statistics just on that, if there is an increase of crimes, robberies, thefts, assaults in our parks.
And as we hire new officers, are we good to get an update on that?
Anything else?
Mr. Chair? Following up on that, I'd like to know where we are in the hiring process. We were recruiting. When does academy start? How many are in there? When does the second class start, et cetera, et cetera? And I'd also like to have probably six months' worth of the child trafficking stats. How many have we arrested? How many we identified, et cetera, et cetera?
Any other future agenda items? The chief's back there just typing away, putting all these agenda items down. You want to share the love, you want to share the love, right? That's why they were nice and quiet over there.
They go first, so they're hidden.
Councilmember Pastore?
Yeah, I want to follow up on the block watch regarding the conversation that we had previously, how it was granted, what were the items, and specifically the lighting, the alley lighting. Thank you.
And just to be fair, maybe we can have an update on the water safety coming up in the near future. All righty. Anything else? All righty, with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much for attending.